I'd like to call the Monday, September 11, 2017, Planning Commission, Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. And if I would ask you to please stand and join me in a moment of silence for those of 9/11, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here this evening, and those watching as well. Tonight we have the consent agenda. I'll go over what we have for the agenda. We have the public hearing for Calamar. We also have number three, Tequesta Village. Then we have other business and adjournments, so we don't have a very long meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Subway.
Commissioner Peel? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Fairbanks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Thank you. Now, I'm going to open the public hearing. Before I do, let me go ahead and give you the instructions, what I'm going to do for the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, then I'll call for exhibits from Mr. McDonald, the attorney. Staff will make their presentation. I'll ask for the applicant to make their presentation. I'll call for witnesses in favor and witnesses opposed. We'll have some general discussion, at which time I'll close the public hearing. We'll have any further discussion, and we'll cast our vote. So with that, I will call the public hearing. Calamar Senior Housing. And Mr. McDonald, would you please read the...
Madam Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit publication in the examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV, Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. Madam Chairman, those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Wright, you're going to make the presentation for staff.
Thank you, Chairman Banks and commissioners. Before you this evening is a request to rezone property from SO ADPO, Service Office, Adams Area Parkway Overlay, to MF-18 ADPO, High Density Multifamily Adams Area Parkway Overlay. The subject property is located along Northeast Coronado Drive, approximately, sorry, immediately east of the Adams Point Golf Course, and contains approximately 7.8 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to develop a multifamily apartment building that is intended to provide independent living for seniors. The 2014 Comprehensive Plan identifies the subject property as a corridor reinvestment area, which encourages a mix of employment-dominated land uses and high-density residential development. This mix of land uses provides housing options in close proximity to commercial retail and services, providing new residents to provide long-term support to those businesses. This mix of use also allows more trips to be completed by walking or biking, and the applicant has discussed their plans with Haldex, which is located approximately 200 feet to the east of the site, and they are in support, and they have submitted a letter in support of the proposed development. The rezoning request is consistent with the rezoning review criteria as noted and the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wright? Commissioner Billups?
Just a quick question. A few years ago, we had an informal meeting with a group who wanted to do something similar on this project, on this property. Is this the same group? Do you remember?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Billups, I do not recall. I'm seeing heads shaking no in the audience, so I would assume no. We have had conversations, several conversations, with the current development group applicant leading up to this, in terms of pre-application meetings and such.
This has been a few years ago.
Yes, not a few years ago, no, but over the last several months, we have with the same group here.
Are there any other questions? Okay. I'd like to ask if the applicant would like to make their presentation. You'll need to be sworn in.
Dan Foster with Schlegel &amp; Associates, 14920 West 107th Street, Lenox, Kansas, appearing on behalf of Calamar. Also here tonight is Jerry Hill with Calamar, and he would like to make a couple remarks as well in support of the case. We are not the same group, we're a different group, so just want to put that on the public record right away. Calamar, we're looking at doing an independent living senior apartment project here, which is essentially, is not assisted care, it's not nursing care, it's an independent living, folks that are still somewhat mobile, can get out and about a little bit. One of the things that they look at, they looked at several sites in Blue Springs, and one of the things they look at is proximity to commercial services, proximity or visibility from major highways or thoroughfares, proximity to recreational facilities, in this case, the golf course is something that really attracted them to this particular site, in terms of being able to have that view of the golf course, as well as obviously, the visibility from I-70. And so that's one of the reasons why we've kind of come back around. Like I said, we looked at several sites, some of those were not really suitable for the building that we're looking at, some of those, the folks didn't want to come to the table, in terms of other sites that we were looking at, and so we had kind of landed on this particular site. In meeting with staff, they did suggest that we go and talk to the Haldex folks, which we did, and they were very supportive of that plan and our proposed project here for this particular project. 7.8 acres, we're going to be coming forward with a site plan, concept site plan, preliminary plat, final plat for sale only, to get the parcel created here in the near future if this gets approved. They'd like to begin construction even this particular year, if possible, in terms of grading and that type of thing. 132 units is what they're looking at for this particular site. So with that, I'm going to have Jerry come up and tell you a little bit more about Calamar, and who they are, so that you have a good feel for what type of citizen they'd be for the community.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Thanks. My name is Jerry Hill. The Calamar Midwest office address is 6614 South 118th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. I live here in Kansas City, work out of here. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about Calamar and our, and this project in particular. Calamar has been around for about 30 years. It is headquartered just outside of Buffalo, New York. It has about 30 senior independent living communities in the Midwest and in the New England area. Will be expanding later this year into the Carolinas. We build, own, and operate the facilities. We do not sell them, we've never sold one of our facilities, so that has an impact on the quality that we build, the amount of money we spend on those. In the Midwest, we have three communities in Omaha, two communities in Des Moines, we have three right now in the Kansas City metro area, one north of the river in Kansas City, one in Independence, and last month, our largest facility opened in Olathe. And in addition to this site, we are also going through the entire process in Shawnee, Kansas, for a community there. As Dan mentioned, there'll be 132 units in this facility. It is independent living, we do not provide medical care, we do not provide meals and those kinds of things directly. We can sometimes assist with third-party vendors coming in if residents need that. But we do a significant amount of programming for our residents. This facility, for example, here, will have a lounge, a library, a community room, a game room, a theater, a yoga room, a workout room, a classroom, chapel, as well as a number of outdoor amenities for them to use. And we'll have full-time staff that do programming, as well as full-time staff that manage. Most of our residents come from within 15 miles of our facilities. Our typical user is, if you just want to look across the board, the average will be a 72-year-old single woman. About 60% of our users sell a house to move into our facility, and about 40% are in rental property, and they move into the facility that way. We have, usually our facilities will be about 35 to 40% leased up at opening, and within 12 months, will be fully leased up. We have very little turnover, most people that move into our facilities do not leave unless they need a higher level of care. And as Dan mentioned, we seek to be near retail, restaurants, healthcare, and so this is a terrific location for us, for all of those purposes. We've done a significant demographic study of the metropolitan area. Blue Springs ranks very high in terms of the need for the facility. If you're aware of independent living facilities in Eastern Jackson County, they're almost all full with waiting lists. There's a significant demand for this product here. We want to be good neighbors, we, as I said, we don't, we're not a build and turn over and sell. We operate, maintain them, and so we appreciate the work the staff has done with us. We've met with them three or four times on the project, and have tailored what we're doing and our location and our site, and you'll see that as we move forward with this, if this is approved tonight, so that we can be a good enhancement to this, to this community. So I appreciate the opportunity to say this, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Before you leave, Mr. Hill, is this age-restricted?
It's 55-plus, but it is, we have, the reality is, we have very few residents below 65. Most, but you can be in it if you're 55 or older, which is the government standard for senior housing.
And then...
And this is, and this is not, I should have said this, this is, there's not a buy-in to this facility, it's not a co-op or those things, and there is, it's purely a lease, a lease arrangement.
Do you have an option on the additional land next door?
No. No.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Mr. Billups?
You've kind of touched on this a little bit already, but I'd like to ask a little bit different direction here. Have you looked at some other sites that were already prop, the correct zoning, and why would they not be appropriate for this, and we'd need to change the zoning here?
Well, we looked at a number of sites, and the staff was good enough, staff directed us to some sites to look at as well. There were a variety of reasons, sometimes it was the price, sometimes it was the size of the parcel and the inability, unwillingness to reduce the size or subdivide the parcel. Some of them were not large enough. We really need a site this size for what, for what we do, because we do have exterior activity space and those things that we do. And so there were a variety of reasons that we could not, did not find another site. And frankly, this site is, is a dynamite site for what, for what we're looking for, because of its proximity to St. Mary's, to what St. Luke's is doing, and then all of this retail. It's a, and so all of those things together led us to this site.
Yes.
How, how large are each of the, what kind of units typically are you looking at in each of these?
This, this community will have three different types of units. There'll be a one-bedroom, one bath, there'll be a two-bedroom, one bath, and there'll be a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath unit, and they range in size from about 700 square feet to a little over 1,000 square feet in each unit. Each unit will also have these about...
No studios or anything like that? No studios?
No studios. No.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are your rental rates going to be set across the board? Are they government subsidized?
This is not subsidized, and so it's, the rates in this facility will be, at opening, somewhere between about 950 to about 1250, in that range would be the rates for, for this facility.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Are they all one level, and will they have garages associated?
There are, the facility is three levels, the units are all one level. We will have surface parking, and then we'll have, I think on this site, we'll have 49 garages that are available for tenants to, to lease, in addition to their rent. In terms of parking and in terms of traffic, because of the kind of facility we are, we will end up using about two-thirds of the parking that we have, because some of our residents do not have vehicles, and a typical apartment complex will have multiple vehicles for an apartment, and we, we never have multiple, multiple vehicles. We will provide some transportation and make arrangements for transportation for our residents, and so some of them don't have vehicles, and some of them do, somewhat depends on the age. I think I saw a hand down here.
Commissioner Fairbanks, did you have a question?
Yes, I was curious, will these buildings have elevators?
Yes, there'll be two elevators in the building.
Okay. The other question is, what's the name of the facility that we have in Independence?
In Independence, it is, now, if you hadn't asked me, I could have told you that. What?
Cedarhurst.
What?
Cedarhurst.
No, it's not Cedarhurst.
Is it the Fountains?
No, no. It is located, it is located just south of 40 Highway, you know, where that QuickTrip is there, just at 470, sits back in there, off of that.
Madam Chair, I believe it's called the Springs.
The Springs?
I think that is right. I'm sorry.
The Springs in Independence.
The, that's right, it's Springs, and then the one north of Rivers, Ucress. Just a, just a comment, the one in Independence, this tells you what the market is in, in Eastern Jackson County for this. The one, I've told you, typically, it takes about a year after we open to fill up. That one filled up in about six months, and has a waiting list for people waiting to get in, in the facility. And I've been to almost all of them in Eastern Jackson County, and virtually all of them have, have a waiting list that are independent living facilities.
Your phone's going down.
Madam Chair?
Okay, yes. Anyone else? Yes. Commissioner Casey?
How often do you reevaluate the rates for your tenants?
Well, our tenants do one-year leases, and so each year, there's a, there's an evaluation of that, the not, it's based on market forces and what's happening in the economy and what's happening in the, in the area. The most our rents ever go up in a single year is 2% or 3%, and they don't always go up, they don't always go up that. Somewhat depends on the, how full the facility is and, and what's happening in the, in the community around them.
Are there any other questions by the commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Hill, is maintenance provided fully on all properties?
Oh, yes, we'll have a full-time maintenance person on the facility all the time, that will both handle common areas, as well as in, as well as any maintenance in the units.
Any service staff, do you, how many do you plan on hiring?
We will have a, we'll have a full-time manager, a full-time maintenance person, and then we will have a, we, our, our program is called, our activity program is called Self Program, and we'll have a full-time self-coordinator that will do, essentially, an activities person that will handle those things. Now, that person, in, sometimes in a startup, when we're doing two communities at once, that person may start out as full-time for the first few months, but then by the time the building is at capacity, then that person will be full-time. But, but we actually will hire the manager about six months ahead of the building being completed, and they will begin to do leases and, and deal with potential residents. We had, for example, the day that the Olathe one opened last month, we had, I think, 17 residents move in the first day, so I mean, there's a lot of coordination that happens ahead of the facility, so we'll hire the manager several months in advance.
Okay, how many people do you actually then provide maintenance, let's say, replacing particular items or repairing items for each of the units?
Well, we have one full-time maintenance on, on staff that's there, that would do most of the routine maintenance, and then, of course, if we need HVAC people or things like that, they're, they're calling independent contractors for that. And in fact, one of the things we, one of the things we've, we've been talking to, to Haldex about is, still, we move our grounds and what, what they do, and maybe combining all of that to make sure that the whole, the whole area looks, looks nice and is coordinated and so on.
Madam Chair?
Do you have special amenities for the disabled?
We have, we have, yes, we have special, all of our units have, have more capacity for disabilities than a typical apartment has, but we have a lot, we have units that are designed with zero-entry showers, and with lower counters, and those, those kinds of things for people that are in wheelchairs or such. And we, it's not unusual for us to have somebody that moves into a facility that doesn't need those, and then a few years later, needs them, and so when one becomes available, they'll move internally within the building, if they have, if they have a need for that. But, no, we have a number of units that are specifically designed for, for wheelchair and those.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you have, like, the emergency pools in the apartments, if one of the residents should fall, or something should happen, that they need help? Is there a way for them to get a hold of someone?
We do not have, we do not have buttons in the room, in all the rooms in the apartments. Our facilities oftentimes will have the, the aware, you know, so the resident have them with them, and at times, we have, have one alarm kind of a thing that they can do in the apartment. It varies on community, and frankly, that hasn't been worked out exactly which way this community will be. But of course, one of our big issues is that we have to, to make sure our residents are safe and have the ability for, for emergency care, and that's one of the reasons that we staff like we do, and keep track of our residents, and know their schedule, and know where they are and that. But we've used, technology's been changing on that so much, that we have a number of different things in different communities that have been done in that regard.
Well, this is just independent living anyway.
That's right. That's right. It's not, it's not the other, but, but still, you know, we have people that, especially, we have people that don't start out that way, but end up using walkers and those kinds of things, and so we want to be sure that all of our hallways have railings, you know, so that they have those and those kinds of things.
All right. Commissioner Fairbanks?
So you're not going to be regulated by the state of Missouri for any senior facilities?
We're not, we're not nursing home regulation. That's right.
You're not nursing home regulation.
We fall under, we fall under the criteria, whatever criteria you all have, of course, for multifamily, and then, I don't believe that you all have a separate criteria for senior housing, so we would fall under your regular multifamily. Some communities have separate criteria for senior housing.
Except that if you're saying it's senior housing, then you would have the federal guidelines.
That's right. Oh, yeah, yes, we mean all the federal guidelines for, for senior housing, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, Commissioner Billups' question earlier, I did have a chance to quickly search, it was back in June of 2014, was the last time there was any further discussion similar to this, and that was with the, the present owner as well. So, the present owner met with us at that time, back in 2014, and now is moving forward with the Calamar group here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now, we'd like to call anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project, or the rezoning. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing that, and I will bring it back up here. Is there any other open discussion we'd like on record? I will close the public hearing. This time, I would like to see if there has been anybody like to make a motion on this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
I move that rezoning request to RC 08175971 be approved as submitted by the applicant.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fairbanks? This will be a real call vote.
Planning Commissioner Corradaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Okay, this will go to the City Council on September 18, and they meet at 6 o'clock. So, for those of you that like to follow it. All right, now, we will go ahead and go on to the site plan and design review for Tequesta Village. Mr. Jury, you have this one.
Thank you, Chairman Banks and Planning Commissioners. Before you today, the applicant, Tequesta Development LLC, and Brian Mertz, is asking for approval of a site plan and design review for Tequesta Village, which is generally located on the south side of AA Highway, as you can see here, approximately 750 feet or so west of Southeast Sunnyside School Road. Previously, we have heard a rezoning for this property, which rezoned the property from MF-14 and single-family, or SF-7, to the entire site being zoned MF-10, which is what it is currently. We also have heard a preliminary plat back in May as well, that was approved, and the proposed layout of the streets and lots match what the site plan and design review shows. So, it does match the preliminary plat. A final plat will be required to be approved prior to any building permits being released for this, for this development, but the, the public improvements, streets and whatnot, need to be installed before that can be approved by City Council and Planning Commission. The site is MF-10 zoning, with a major collector, AA Highway to the north, mainly surrounded by single-family with a couple pockets on either side, east and west of it, of MF-14 And the majority of, or the entirety of, of the boundaries are single-family uses, even if they are zoned multifamily on east, west, and south. The existing conditions on site, there are quite a few great changes in existing trees. This, this does show the existing conditions prior to some of the grading that has taken place already. But, there are quite a few existing trees, which they are proposing to save, several of them, and we'll get to that here in a bit. First off, I'll go over the vehicular and pedestrian access of the site. The main entrance would be along AA Highway, along the north portion of the site, and then it'll also continue through Gingerbread Court to the south, and exit through the single-family development for a second entrance that is required for development of this site, or of this size, excuse me. The pedestrian system, there is a requirement for a sidewalk on both sides of the street, and they have provided that, and there is also a trail that runs along, or through Lot 1, and a long track day there, and that provides a walk along the detention pond that is existing, and will be regraded through this process as well. In terms of landscaping, city does require a few different types of landscaping, one of them being the frontage type, between the street and the buildings, also the open-space landscaping in open-space tracks, such as Track A and B, as shown here, as well as the landscape requirements of the lots 1, 2, and 3 themselves, as well. So first off, the landscaping, or the frontage-type landscaping, there is buffer edge required... edge required along AA Highway. They do meet the tree requirements and the berm requirement with the grading, the existing ditch that does provide quite a bit of grade difference there. So that frontage type for the buffer edges met and all of the interior local streets, a yard and setback with the required street tree requirements is also met with the proposed landscaping. As far as the open space tracks A and B, the, the proposed plan does meet the required trees and, that are, are set out in the subdivision guidelines for open space tracks. Track B is more of a pocket park type with sidewalk around it and the pool house community, or the pool and the community house located just adjacent to it. And Track A, approximately two acres, is a greenway, which does require a trail alongside it and, and a trees, certain number of trees along the trail to provide some shade as well, which they have met those requirements. As for landscaping of lots 1, 2 and 3, they do provide the required number of landscape plant units in the north buffer along AA, the east and the west buffers between single family zoning and, and their property, which is MF 10, and then also on the south, on the south buffer between the, their property MF 10 and single family to the south. They have met all of those buffer requirements, but they are short 139 plant units in the open space requirement, which in total, they do have 1,718 plant units and, or they're required 1,718 plant units and they have only provided 1592. So that is one of the staff conditions that the final, before building permit issuance, they do need to provide a landscape plan with a building permit that meets these landscape Additionally, the applicant has provided a fence along the eastern buffer of approximately 300 feet or so, a little over 300 feet. And they provided it only in the single fam, where MF 10, about single family zoning. And technically a fence is not required, but during the rezoning process, the, a neighbor, property owner asked that a fence or something that will help reduce trespassing issues as well as visual impact of their property might be looked at. And the mayor also had, had supported that significantly himself as well. So staff does recommend that a, the fence be proposed to extend all the way up to AA Highway except for the 50-foot building line setback, which is approximately here on the, on the plan up ahead, or overhead. So just extending that and requiring that six-foot privacy wood fence to be extended. And staff does believe that will be helpful in terms of cutting down trespassing and, and some of the visual impact as well, especially with all these buildings that are in a line in relatively close succession to those, those neighboring properties, which are both single family uses, even if they aren't zoned single family. There are some, I have heard some concerns, I guess, of, of a fence being required on this, or not being required on the south side, but there is quite a bit of distance greater than 30 feet along the south side and, and the majority of the buildings do not extend into that 30-foot required setback for multifamily buildings. So staff does believe that the fence requirement may not be as needed along those sides. And I took a look at the aerial photo as well and tried, I wasn't able to make it out to the site in time, I guess, but I did see quite a few of the existing single family to the south did have some fencing up already and, and a duplication of that might not necessarily be very beneficial to, to either party, I guess. Going beyond that, the lot size, I will mention the lot setbacks for this property. The front setback is a 50-foot setback along AA Highway. All the interior streets require a 20-foot setback along local roads. And then the, or 20, yeah, 20, 20-foot setback along local roads. And then the rear setback is 20 feet unless the long side of the building faces a single family use, then it must increase by 50%, which is where that 30-foot setback is shown, or is shown on this, on this plat. So mainly that is shown along this, this backside where there's a 30-foot setback shown. And other places where the long side of the building isn't facing it, such as down here on the south side, it's only a 20-foot setback as required by code if, if the short side of the building is facing single family uses. Going into the proposed clubhouse, the applicant provided building plans and, and the, the clubhouse does provide about 1,800 square feet. It's one story, about 20 feet tall. Will have a leasing office, community room and a fitness room located within it. It does have stone veneer, fiber composite lap siding, glass, metal gutters and asphalt shingle roof as well. As for the multifamily units, the, there's three, four and five plexes and there's a total of 31 buildings, multifamily buildings, I should say, and a total of 123 dwelling units between those 31 buildings. And the majority of the proposed buildings are four plexes with a few three and five plexes scattered throughout. As you can see, it's a two-story mainly, or two-story buildings, 27 and a half feet tall at the roof ridge. They have one and two car garages and, I'll zoom in a little bit to the fourplex. One and two car garages, the dwelling units each range between about 1,300 square feet to almost 1,600 square feet. And the living area, and that doesn't include the garage area, which ranges from 300 to 400 square feet approximately. The garages do not take up more than 25% of the facade as required by code. So they do meet the requirements in that aspect. The building does have stone veneer, vinyl lap siding and shake, as well as vinyl shutters, glass, metal gutters and asphalt shingles. The front and the rear facades, they do have some gables and, and some extra elements to them to provide a little variation in that roof line and, as well as the building footprint, provides a little bit in and out movement if you're looking in the floor plan The, I will mention that the, the side elevations do provide a stone option as well as the shake gable option as well. And the option for that is mainly for the, for the instance where the building is on a hard corner where two streets intersect or where the, the building faces a, the exterior of the development. So mainly that will be located, if you look at the site plan view, mainly on the entrances of, of the development as well as some of these hard corners where you can see the side of the building as well. So that's the intent of that and staff does recommend that, that, that shake gable option is required on those street-facing facades as well as the entrances to the development. As for, I'll go over the floor plans as well. For the fourplex at least. The main thing I'll go over is the main, or the front entrance requirement by code. Front entrance, they're allowed to have one of three of our different types of front entrances, the porch stoop or portico, they chose. When you have multiple dwelling units in one building, you have to provide a variety of, of front entrance features and they provided the portico feature on the bookends and the stoop feature on the interior dwelling units of each, of each building type. And they did meet the square footage requirement for each of these with either a six-foot by eight-foot porch or portico or a seven-foot by seven-foot, which meets the minimum of 48 square feet. The portico, just to show the front elevation of that, the portico does have that gabled area on the two bookends and then the porch does show in that center area. And beyond that, I'll go over some of the public improvements and phasing as well of the site as a whole. So the, before final plat approval, all the streets, utilities and everything need to go in. I will mention that all the open space amenities in tracks A and B, as well as the trail required in Lot 1, or parts of Lot 1 at least, must be installed or financially guaranteed prior to the final plat approval. And most likely financially guaranteed due to construction grading and everything that, that'll be happening during that same process as well. I will mention that that trail within Lot 1 and Track A should be a six-foot trail composed either a paved surface or crushed stone, as allowed in the past. The developer has mentioned that the community how, or the community building in the pool will have, or they're planning on building that pretty soon in the, the construction of the development, but we will require that prior to the release of the building permit for the last five multifamily buildings, a certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse and pool must be issued, just to make sure that that does happen at some point. So with that, staff does recommend approval with 11 conditions. Did say eight in the staff report, but I think we added a couple halfway through the process. So we'll make sure that that says 11 conditions and staff recommends approval for that. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Mr. Fairbanks?
Is the wood fence now part of a condition?
Yes, condition number 11, a six-foot wood privacy fence must be installed along the entire east boundary of the development except that 50-foot setback.
All right. I thought when I read the agenda that it was an option, but if it's a condition, that's one.
Yeah, it's one of the 11 staff recommended conditions.
Okay, are there any other questions? Could I ask you real quick, what's, did you say it was 30-foot setback from the ones next to the single family? I think that's what you said.
Yeah, it's a 30-foot setback if the long side of the building faces a single family use. Not necessarily just zoning, but use.
All right. I just wanted to make sure when I ask. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Jury. Now I'd like to ask if the applicant would like to come make their presentation? If we could have your name, you don't need to be sworn in.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Patricia, Patricia Jensen with the White Goss Law Firm with offices located at 4510 Bellevue. With me is Brian Mertz. He is the principal of Toquesta Development LLC and the person who will be constructing Toquesta Village. Brian has brought up the material board, just so you have an idea of the materials in terms of the color and actual materials that are being planned for the site. We appreciate working with the staff. We met with them in regards to this application and have provided revised plans in accordance with a number of their comments recently. And that's what's in front of you today. We are in agreement with all of the conditions, except we're going to ask you to modify condition number 11. We have no issues with conditions number one through 10 and we've got, we would like to discuss the fence condition as we understand that the fence condition was really adjacent to the SF, the single family 7 zoning, not the MF, the multifamily 14 zoning. Additionally, we believe that if you consider and look at what actually exists out there, there is a pretty dense tree buffer adjacent to that multifamily zoning. I've got some pictures, I would like to have copies for all of you to have distributed and then we can talk from there, if that's okay.
Can you give me one of them?
Yeah.
Please.
I just have 10 copies.
That's all right.
No, I want one.
Why is it in public hearing?
No, they don't believe it.
I'll let you get the photos and then I'll talk from there. The top photo is as you look directly east to that SF, single family district. And that is where we plan on constructing the fence. We have no issue with constructing the fence along that SF 7 boundary. The second photo really is midway between the SF 7 and the multifamily zoning. So you can see where the tree buffer starts. And then the last photo really looks directly north. Do they, oh, they do show up. So that's looking directly at the SF 7 zoning district. And then the next photo shows you the beginning of the tree buffer as you look towards the And then the final photo. I gotta turn it around. Really looks at the tree buffer that exists along that multifamily zoning district. Additionally, if you look at the landscaping plan that we have put into place, you'll see that we've got landscaping plan, planned along that eastern boundary and that certainly isn't visible right now. So what we're going to ask you to do is to modify condition number 11 to state a six wood, a six-foot wood privacy fence must be installed along the east boundary of the development, so strike out the word entire, adjacent to the SF 7 zoning as shown on the plan and then. then period, and strike out the rest of that sentence. And then it would state, prior to release of occupancy for each building along the eastern boundary adjacent to the SF7 zoning, the section of fence adjacent to each building must be installed until the fence is fully complete. We believe that meets the intent. We understand that the fence is not required for here, but we certainly are willing to put it in to address the concern that was expressed during the rezoning and the preliminary plat approval for here. But we believe that the existing tree vegetation certainly provides a good buffer, especially since it's own multifamily. We would expect when that property would be developed that they would put a fence on the south side of their property.
Are there any questions?
I'm losing track here, I'm sorry. That tree line we're talking about, is that on your property, or is that on the adjacent property?
Yeah, so when I was out there taking those pictures, it's on the property line for the most part. A lot of it is on MF14, I'm sorry, but a lot of it's on ours. So if we were to put that fence through there as close to the MF14, we would actually be removing some trees to do that, and I don't know if that's the intent of what we want to do.
Well, that kind of goes to the next question. You've done a lot of grading out there already, and I know you've removed a lot of trees out there. Are we sure that the trees that are there, A, will not be removed, and B, will survive after all the grading that you've done?
Correct. And we did a tree survey as part of our landscaping plan as required by staff, and our engineer is here to speak on that behalf as well. But those trees that are there now will be existing instead.
Okay. And are they, and I don't know the right terminology here, but are they good trees or are they junk trees, you know, like the?
You don't want a mulberry.
No, I don't know, not the mulberry, but the ones, the big thorns.
Yeah, I haven't come across any of those. We have some beautiful cottonwoods.
I have some of those in my backyard.
There's some beautiful cottonwoods on the west side. The engineer and I were actually talking about today, making sure we can preserve those because they are beautiful, massive trees, and that's our intent, because it is part of our study. And every tree that we lose is a new one I would have to plant. We have a very good buffer on the south side, I believe, and on the northwest side along AA, some existing trees there that we don't have any plans on touching. So as of right now, all of our clearing has been completed, and all those trees are part of the tree survey that we performed.
And you don't anticipate the construction getting into that tree line in any way?
No, sir.
Are there any other questions? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I'd like to call and see if there's anyone at this time that would like to speak in favor of this project.
Madam Chair, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm, okay, so, I'm just, it's a routine, man. Well, they might.
I should have it when I talk about.
You tried to make this a public hearing, that's what you did, Mr. Donald. You got me all off track. Okay. All right. There's no other further discussion, then I would entertain a motion.
Like to make a comment.
Sure, certainly.
Yeah, the zoning there is MF14, but it is single-family residential, which is what staff was referring to. Those homes, I don't think there's, those homeowners have any intention of selling their property and somebody putting up an apartment complex or anything like that. I would rather those were treated the same as the single family. So personally, I would rather see the fence there, even with the tree line, just because of what's actually there, rather than necessarily what the zoning is, because those could be there for another 20, 30 years. And this is just a personal thing. Wish you guys had looked at a different design on the buildings. I just am tired of these same old fourplexes. But they meet code, so I'm not going to hold that against you. That's just a, that's just a personal thing.
Can we just clarify one statement you've made?
Sure.
You need to come to the mic, please.
Sorry. That property is for sale.
It's sold now.
It's sold, they're going to live there a long time.
You'll need to come to the front.
Well, again, it's not a public hearing, so.
I know. Okay.
A lot of those properties along there have been for sale for the last 30 years, so that doesn't necessarily mean there's any plans for anybody to move. It's just, they put a for-sale sign up and put a price on it. If somebody wants to come along and meet the price, then they're going to, you know, sell it.
Anything's for sale for the right.
Anything's for sale for the right price.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would also like to put in my agreement with Commissioner Phillips' concerns, and I believe that that's headed in the right direction.
Madam Chair.
I do have a question, if I would, if I could ask you real quick. What, are those going to be five plexes behind these, the single-family, or?
No, so.
I can't tell.
If you look up gingerbread, that's the road entry on the far south side. The first building on the left is a fiveplex.
Okay.
And then in the interior loop, that's the fiveplex that Nathan's highlighting right there. That's the only two fiveplexes.
I just wanted to make sure, I couldn't, you know, drawings can be drawings and whatever you put in there. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify with Mr. Wright. Code doesn't necessarily require them to have a fence that buffers the MF14, is that correct?
Code does not require a fence when multifamily buffers single-family or multifamily.
Okay. Then I would have to put it in contrast to what the other commissioners have said. I would have to say I'm not comfortable with requiring that of them if it's not required in the code.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Graham.
I would move to approve with the 10 staff comments and the 11th comment amended as requested by the applicant.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We're going to do a roll call on this, please.
Planning Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Nay.
Commissioner Peel.
Nay.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Nay.
Commissioner Juhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Nay.
Commissioner Haney.
Nay.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Nay.
Chairman Banks.
Nay.
Okay, that motion was denied.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move for approval with the original 11 staff conditions.
Okay, can I hear a second? Okay, we'll do another roll call vote.
All right. Planning Commissioner Graham.
No.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Nay.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Juhan.
Nay.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Nay.
Commissioner Cradoff. Commissioner Casey.
Nay.
Chairman Banks. Okay, we have a tie.
Great. There is a tie. You want a roll call again?
Make sure that everyone of the commissioners understands the motion.
Okay. The motion that was, the second motion, was to go back to the original request by the staff with the full fence all the way except for the 50 feet to double A. That was the second motion. And I might need legal counsel on this.
Well, the first motion, I don't, what was the count on the first motion?
First motion.
I know it was denied.
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 3 to 7. 3, it was denied.
3, 4, and 7 against.
Yes.
So seven people voted against change in the fences.
Right.
And then the second time around.
It was tough.
They made a motion to, yeah.
So someone voted nay, which is perfectly unacceptable.
Correct.
That had nothing to do with the fences.
Madam Chair, I will say that we would rather you pass it with the 11 conditions than deny it altogether. We'll have to work around how a fence will go in along there, but we certainly have invested in the site, and we worked with staff on the site. It follows up on the zoning that was granted by the commission and this council, follows on the preliminary plat. We would rather you vote to approve it with the 11 conditions rather than result in a denial altogether.
And staff will also mention if, during the building permit process, we can work with the developers to hopefully maybe not put the fence right on the property line where they remove the existing trees, but maybe move it off just a hair to save those existing trees.
Okay.
If that was the reason.
Somebody who voted against the second motion could ask that it be re-voted on, make a motion to re-vote it, and somebody could second that, and then you can vote again and decide whether or not you want to go along with what the applicant just said.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would move to re-vote again on the previous motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, just a moment, please.
Was he a nay?
That was a nay.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're voting, we're voting on accepting all 11 of staff's recommendations and approving the, whether you want to approve the project with all 11.
Should we do a, for the re-vote, all in favor and against?
I think we can do it by voice if you think it'll make it.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do it that way? Okay, we have a first and a second motion.
For a re-vote.
For a re-vote that would include all 11 conditions, that would include the fence except going on the east side up to the 50 feet of double A. That would include that number 11 condition. So now I'm going to ask all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I have a question before you continue with this. He mentioned that there was room for some modification, that some kind of condition he was willing to work with the applicant on. Did you specify?
And I was mentioning that during the building permit process, we can work with a developer, and that doesn't necessarily have to be part of this condition, but we can, we can work, because there's no, no part of this condition requires it to be on the property line. We can work with a developer to approve the building permit with it.
I think Mr. Jury, his comments were that the actual location of the fence may be adjusted inward away from the trees or something like that, but it still would need to be there, correct?
Yes, yes.
Did that clarify things for him?
Yes.
All right. Now is there, we have nay, a per, motions to approve. Now do I have any noes or nays?
Okay.
Hearing none, the motion has carried with condition 11. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
And your consideration. Okay. Is there any other business? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, the next meeting is two weeks from now, Monday, September 25. Do you need to get any final names to put at the hat here tonight, if possible? Please announce your intention either here or let Karen or me know after the meeting about the state planning conference. So we have a few folks who have expressed interest, but we want to make sure we don't miss anybody before we make our selections of the two planning commissioners who will attend. I'll separate from that, but also coming up, we are still intending to have a planning commissioners training event in Lee's Summit on Tuesday, October 3. I don't have any more details yet at that, on that, so still just please keep that open on your calendars, and as soon as we get more from good folks at Lee's Summit, we will let you know as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I would like to remind everyone, invite everyone downtown this weekend for the Chambers Fall Fun Fest, Friday afternoon, Saturday, and Sunday.
That's great. It's always a nice time and good to see everybody. Is there any other new business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, and have a good night, evening, this evening.